Welcome to the school board meeting we're having here at RER today. We'll go over the, again, we, in a closed session, no, no, there's no decisions were made. So, nothing to report there. And then we will do the salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just as eternal.
To I and D Board Meeting Protocol.
Thank you, Mr. Cagle. I will read our board meeting protocol. Our meeting is being recorded. It's open to the public and we're also being broadcast live through Zoom teleconference. Public comments are three minutes per agenda item. The board shall limit the time for a public comment for each agenda item to twenty minutes, and with board consent, the board president may increase or decrease the time allowed to make public comment. To make public comment via Zoom teleconference, please notify the board meeting assistant through the chat box feature in Zoom, or by using the raised hand feature in Zoom when the agenda item is being addressed. To make public comment in person, there's public comment cards probably over there on the counter where you come in the door there, and those would go to Ms. Bach, our board member assistant here. And so, do we have public comments tonight?
We do not.
We do not, okay, all right. And then email public comments as well can be emailed to the superintendent twenty-four hours before the board meetings. They'd be posted to our website with our agenda. We did not receive emails for our meeting tonight. Board vote and connectivity. Each motion will be followed by a rule called Vote for Action Items. Should a board member attend the meeting remotely and lose connectivity by teleconference or phone, the meeting will be delayed by five minutes. All of our trustees are here tonight. And regular board meetings shall be adjourned by ten thirty.
Thank you very much for that. Moving on, we'll go to item E, Presentations and Recognitions. We have McCaffrey Student Leadership Report.
What do you like then?
Well, let's see, where's the best place so they can be seen on Zoom? Right up front.
Can you tell us who you are? Give us your name and then grade.
Good evening, Superintendent Lois Yant, Director of Curriculum, Claudia Del Toro Angliano, Director of Educational Services, Kojit Najjar,
Our School Board President Wesley Cagle, Vice President Tracy Skinner, Clerk Casey Roboy, and Members Catherine Harper and Annette Coons.
My name is Adele Samuel.
And I'm Michelle Scanoney, and we are part of the McCaffrey Middle School's Leadership Class of two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four.
We are here with our teacher, Mrs. Twainis, Principal, Mr. Castillo, and Assistant Principal, Mrs. Troll, and we are excited to share what we have accomplished so far this past month and what we're looking forward to.
This year, we wanted to focus on the idea of being one team, not only in our class, but across campus, and that's why Familia is the city for this year. We want everyone to know that we are one family and we take pride in being a Bulldog as well as supporting one another.
Prior to school starting, we hosted our very first Bulldog Jumpstart on August eighth and ninth, welcoming one hundred and eighty-five incoming seventh graders onto campus. This was a great opportunity to get familiar with the campus and help ease the transition to middle school.
The day was filled with a warm welcome and mini rally, followed by campus tours, classroom visits, practicing, moving from class to class, and even a photo scavenger hunt. We had help from some awesome McCaffrey teachers who showed our seventh graders what they will be learning in the school year.
August fifteenth was our second annual Night at the Doghouse. Students got to see who their homeroom teacher was, purchased PE clothes and spirit wear, toured the campus with parents and family, and even grabbed a fun treat from some food vendors. It was a busy night filled with exciting, excited new and returning Bulldogs.
Our first two days of school kicked off with a great start. We went over positive Bulldog behavior and expectations for the school year. Back-to-school night provided parents and families to meet all their students' teachers, and they also got to practice what it's like to have a five-minute passing period between classes.
We are so excited to have partnered with Kona Ice this year to come onto campus during lunch once a month. We love shaved ice and really enjoyed having a cold treat on one of the warmest days a couple of weeks ago.
Last week was surely our busiest time so far. Our leadership class planned our first spirit week, dressing up from tacky tourists to barbecue dads versus soccer moms. We saw some creative outfits from both students and staff. Even Mr. Castillo wore his best barbecue dad outfit.
On Friday, September fifteenth, we invited parents and family to come eat lunch on campus with their students, and it was filled with games, music, raffles, and we had a local business to hang out, come onto campus to sell some delicious boba drinks.
Our first, our first school dance was held after school the same day, and we had three hundred and thirty-five students in attendance. We enjoyed great music, played games in the patio area, and had a movie room if you needed to take a break from dancing. Mrs. Troll showed us her awesome moves. We invite you to come over to show your best moves at our next dance in December.
We are looking forward to celebrating a walk during Octo- October, including Hispanic Heritage Month, Unity Day, Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and Red Ribbon Week. You're also seeing all fifty eighth-grade students in the annual Washington DC trip next month. Be sure to follow their journey on Facebook.
Thank you for allowing us to be here tonight and share with you all what is happening at McCaffrey.
We invite you to enjoy the short video created by Ms. Albert and our awesome K-Dog crew.
Great public speaking. I need to see pictures of the Mrs. Troll and Mr. Castillo. Dad barbecue and dancing, Mrs. Troll. I know they prepared a video for us, but I'm not sure. We might be running into some problems with that.
Well, our audience at home can see it.
So, our audience is seeing it. You know, we'll put it on our website too, and we'll make sure that we email it to our board members. So, that's good. So, everyone at home is watching that. Thank you again for giving us great updates about McCaffrey. You guys are off to a great start and like the shirts too.
Thank you.
How many students are going to DC?
Fifty.
Fifty?
And also students from our Philly as well.
Oh, that's nice.
And Mrs. Twainis is our new leadership teacher. Thank you.
Ready to go on to?
Good information.
Move on down to item F. There's no public comment, correct? Item G, Reports. We'll start with LCAP Goal Number One, Enrollment Update.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to give the board a brief enrollment update this month. Usually enrollment stabilizes, and so it's a better picture of what enrollment might look like for the school year. So, as of last week, we had three thousand three hundred and ninety-three students. That is up thirty-two students compared to ending the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. We ended with three thousand three hundred and sixty-one, so it's good. We'll, we'll take the increase of thirty, thirty-two students. So, at least we're going in the, the right direction. And the breakdown for you there is by school site as well. All the elementary schools have gone up except two of our school sites, and those are the sites that have the lower enrollment in Kinder. Lake Canyon and River Oaks, they only have two Kinder classrooms. The rest have three or four, so that's kind of the real difference we're seeing at the elementary level. And then McCaffrey is the same. They, they ended the year with seven eighty-one. They have seven hundred and eighty students right now, so they're, these data's same.
Thank you for that. With that fixed, care of LCAP Goal Number One, move to LCAP Goal Number Two, Facilities Master Planning.
All right. Last month, the board approved for Architectural Firm Nineteen-Six to help us with updating a facilities master plan, and we are in the beginning stages of that. We had our first meeting, a kickoff meeting, and this month and the month of October, they're visiting all of our school sites. They have to get into all the classrooms. They fly a drone on the top of campus to check the roofs and the HVAC units. It's quite an extensive process. They're at each school for at least a full day, if not two days, depending on the size of the school. And we are hoping, our goal is to have the master plan completed and presented to the board at the April twenty-twenty-four board meeting. And the next step is establishing a steering committee. This committee would meet three to four times between October and April. It would probably be either in the afternoon, might be during the school day, but probably, we'd probably try to do it in the after, the after-school because we do, we're hoping to get a few teachers. This team would help us. They would give us feedback on reviewing the plans from the sites, and then also facility long-term goals for the district, what we might want to see in a facility master plan. So, we are hoping to have one board member, so this, that's where this is on here tonight, two to three principals, two to three teachers, maintenance staff, myself and Alejandra, to serve on this committee. So, if, I would hope that we'd have a board member that would like to, we're adding a committee, basically. Again, no more than probably three or four meetings between now and April. So, if there's an interest from a board trustee that would like to serve on this committee, we would, we would love to have one of you join us.
When do you guys plan on having the meetings?
Probably after school because we don't want to, you know, pull teachers out of their classrooms, so probably after school. And we're hoping two to three teachers, a couple principals have reached out and said there's a teacher or two that they know would be interested in giving feedback in this area. I have three principals that are willing to join on this committee as well. I believe, Mr. Castillo, Mrs. Porter, and Mr. Nelson, I, I believe, will serve on the committee. And then maintenance staff. So, let me know. You don't have to make a decision right now. I'll reach out again, but just think about, dates are not set yet. The first one would not take place until Nineteen-Six is done with surveying the campuses. That would be our first meeting to look at their, their feedback from visiting our school sites.
If it's after school, I mean, if someone else has like interest in it, my feelings won't be heard, but if not, I can make that time work as long as it's after three.
You know, and it might be too, that it might not be the same board member each time. Doesn't have to be the same.
Yeah, it might be available some days.
Yeah, representation from the board.
It's not available till after six.
Right, right. We wouldn't do it that way for our teachers, yeah. Thank you. More to come that, on this this year.
Other reports? The Jennings Property.
Yes, so I wanted to give the board and the community an update on where we are at with potentially leasing the Jennings property. That's ten acres that the district owns on West Elm Avenue. It is just dirt right now, and we have been approached by the city to potentially lease that, and so we are actively working through what that could look like. We met on August twenty-third. That was city staff. We had our facilities attorney there as well. The city, some of the topics that we discussed and some of the things that kind of surfaced. The city would prefer a lease of at least twenty-five years. They feel that if they are willing to put in potentially two to four million dollars to develop the ten acres, that they would want the commitment for at least twenty-five years. We, we both agreed that we would like a cancellation clause. So, say this lease goes through, and the city did not develop the land in the time specified, we would be able to revoke the lease. The city did ask at this time, and still none of this is in writing, this is just talk right now. And I did share with Lorenzo, the city manager, that, this report that I would be sharing. So, so council knows this as well. He's requesting a two years. So, from the time that the lease is developed, probably two years to actually break ground. It takes time to get approval through city council. It takes time to secure funding. So, it, it would still be a couple of years before anything's developed out there if that gets in the terms. We talked about payment, and we're really looking at, again, this is just dirt. We, district would not use any funding to develop the land. This would be all city funding. And so, our goal would be to recover attorney fees that we are having to pay associated to developing this lease. That would be our goal at a minimum. The city, we both, both parties need to research insurance costs and liability. We both have our homework to do on that. The city would develop two ballfields, a parking lot, and bathrooms. And what I have for you is, this was something, this was a document that was presented a couple of years ago to our board and also at a city council meeting. What the, the top corner there in red, that is the district property, the ten acres. And so, they would, you could see three and four is obviously not developed yet either. That's long-term plan for the city. But that top left corner would be the two softball fields, bathrooms, and parking. And I think it's estimated anywhere from two to four million dollars to develop that. That would be, that would be the plan. Potential funding sources the city would use would be measure K, developer fees, and possibly financing options. And our next steps, District's Legal Council is working on draft agreements that the city and the district would review together. We're hoping to have drafts of that agreement by the end of October. Or if you have any feedback or questions about what we've, what we've discussed so far.
That they're, they're expecting a couple, like, two years.
That's what they're asking for, a minimum of two years. I was maybe hoping for a year, but it, I mean, I mean, you know the steps it takes to get approvals, permits. Everything has to be approved by city council, and then securing funding two years is, is reasonable.
Yeah, there's a big hubbub right now about facilities for baseball teams and softball teams and soccer teams, so it's definitely needed.
Yeah. And if we can help the community in that area, you know, we're not using that land, and it's not projected that we would leave that, that land for a school. Might be a win-win.
Do you have any questions? Fit in all awareness, parent training?
Yes. I just want to thank Annette Kinsey and the Teen Center for organizing that and thank the McCaffrey staff for hosting it. It was, I would say, Annette, do you think twenty, twenty-five people?
Yeah, yeah.
About that?
Yeah.
Very good presentation. Excellent. We also have a presentation, not the one that was given on September twelfth, but a different one. We have the presentation on our district website. We have the video. They did share with us that they are going to do a new video in October, and if we get access to that, we'll add that video to our website as well. But very informative and very scary what's out there. Kojit, you attended as well. Cleo was there, which is, yeah, Mr. Castillo was there. We had High School Superintendent Lisa Pettis was there. They are going to be presenting, I believe, at Liberty Ranch here pretty soon. They presented to McCaffrey Middle School students last year. I think we should probably plan on doing that at least every other year so we hit both grade levels. I know, Annette, what would you?
So, yeah, I was, just wanted to say thank you to the staff because, I mean, it was so, we just like walked in and, and they were so helpful. The version that I saw at the middle school last year was slightly different than the one that they gave in Sept- you know, September twelfth. The one at the school, I think, is, is a little more robust, and so I'm glad to hear that that's the one that they will generally give to students. It would have been nicer to see more people there, but it is, you know, nice that people came out and, you know, if they tell two friends, and then they tell two friends, you know, it sort of spreads. And I think it's just an issue that's gonna be on the forefront as we move forward, unfortunately. So, I couldn't say enough thank you for the facilitation by the school district and by Mr. Castillo and his team, so thank you for that.
Thank you for that report. Three there, school calendars?
Yes, and our first one is Fair Sight Elementary Early Learning Center, and Mrs. Marquez, principal's not with us tonight. So, I will highlight on Friday, the twentieth of October, they're having their Fall Carnival and Book Fair. RER Elementary, we have Mrs. Wheeler.
Hello, back here at Dellicia's Theater. We have two things going on in October. On the fifth, we have Kona Ice at RER, so they are coming to town. And then on the twenty-seventh is our Fall Festival that we are hosting, and that's from one to four.
Thank you, Mrs. Wheeler. Lake Canyon, Mrs. Capino?
Hi. So, today, Lake Canyon has their Messines in the morning, and with that, our new parent co-op group asked that each grade level do a little art project, and those were optioned out today at Lake Canyon, and they were really, really cute. Each grade level did something. And then, October twenty-seventh, we have our haunted house that the students will go through and will, they'll transform to BFLC. The students will go through during the day. And this year, we've added a piece that families can come back after school, and the parents can go through with their kids.
And McCaffrey Middle School, Mrs. Troll?
We have quite a lot. We do have the iSmart parent presentations that are gonna be happening on the seventeenth, and then we have our Fall Band Concert on the nineteenth. We do have our Washington DC trip coming up, up the ninth through thirteenth. And then, yeah, we had Kona Ice. Kona Ice will be back on the fifth along with our volleyball game.
Thank you, Mrs. Troll. From Rainbow Ranch, Mrs. Capino?
So, at Rainbow Ranch on Tuesday fifth and sixth, we will have our big fundraiser of the Jogathon. And the twenty-fifth is our trunk retreat. This is the second year we're doing that. Last year, it was a great turnout. Kids were really excited to get to come to campus in the parking lot and participate, and some most had their costumes on. That was really fun. Both sites will have their monthly Kona Ice visit as well.
I think almost all the sites have Kona Ice. Thank you. River Oaks, Mrs. Troll?
We, on the twentieth is our Fall Festival, and then the twenty-seventh is our first Friday sing.
Thank you. Valio?
Mrs. Wheeler? Back to me. Here we go. I have Valley on the tenth. We have VO, Family Science Night, that starts at six o'clock. Come join us. We also have Kona Ice coming out on the nineteenth, and then we are having our Fall Carnival on the twenty-seventh at four o'clock.
Thank you.
Noticed on quite a few schools, on October twentieth, third grades are going to Liberty Ranch.
It's the egg.
Like the, the pumpkins?
They get to sit in animals.
Thank you for sharing. Moving on to the item H, the consent calendar. This is one that we need to pull the, the, item I, the bid for the site work for three portable classrooms, right?
Yes.
We need to pull that because, once again, I know the, the Blevins Construction. So, same as last month, we'll pull that. We'll do the consent calendar. We'll pull that and we'll come back to that, the next item. Okay? Got that, Tori?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So...
I can share some donations, yeah. So, donations, Lake Canyon, the Kwanas, and the Galt Lions Club donated those gift cards for eight hundred dollars and a garden shed valued at a little over a thousand dollars for the special education learning garden. They have an amazing garden over there. We haven't seen the garden at Lake Canyon, so that's a very nice donation, almost two thousand dollars. And McCaffrey, McCaffrey ASB purchased an HP colored printer valued at seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars, and they donated that to the ASB Student Organization.
Let me make sure I got the bid spot right here. There it is, okay. Okay. So, from there, I need a motion to accept the routine, the consent calendar, except for item I. You need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Tracy, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two, three, two, four, one, two, the consent calendar minus item I bid for site work for three portable classrooms at Lake Canyon Elementary School, seconded by Casey Roboy, Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Annette Kinsey?
Aye.
Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, and then we'll go to two, three, two point four, one, three. The consent calendar items moved for later consideration, the bids for the site work. Can I get a motion for, for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. A motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, three, two, four, one, three, bid for site work for three portable classrooms at Lake Canyon Elementary from Blevins Construction, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Wesley, or Wesley Cagle?
Standing.
Casey Roboy?
Aye.
Annette Kinsey?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries for one.
Thank you for that. We'll go to two, three, two point four, one, four. Which is, is a, be a public hearing for the sufficiency of instructional materials in determination through a resolution whether each student has sufficient textbook and instructional materials pursuant to Education Code six zero one one nine.
Thank you. So, we bring this item to the board every year, and Education Code as stated, six zero one one nine, specifies that the board hold a public hearing in regards to ensuring that all students have all the instructional materials that they need. And we ask the board to open and close a public hearing regarding the sufficiency of instructional materials.
I guess I'll open up the hearing. This time, under two, three, two point four, one, four, I like to open up the public hearing for instructional materials. Anybody like to make any comments? Nope. Now, we'll close it. So, we'll move to two, three, two point four, one, five, for consideration approval of Resolution Number Two, which is regarding sufficiency instructional material for two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you. So, this is the second part to, to that item. So, we are requesting that the board approve the resolution certifying that the Galt Joint Elementary School District is in compliance with Education Code six zero one one nine, ensuring that each student has sufficient instructional materials which are consistent with the content and the cycles of the curriculum frameworks adopted by the California State Board of Education.
Thank you. Does the board member have any questions? Seeing that, I like this, the handout here that kind of goes over. Okay. Seeing that there's no questions or comments, can I get a motion to approve Resolution Number Two?
I'll make the motion.
Is that Catherine?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Annette, thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Catherine Harper to approve item number two, three, two, four, one, five, seconded by Annette Kinsey. Wesley Cagle?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Casey Roboy?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Moving down to two, three, two point four, one, six, for consideration approval of FM three research serving Mauslin, Maulin, Metz, and Associates' proposal to conduct public opinion research. Uh, serving Mauslin, Maulin, Metz, and Associates' proposal to conduct public opinion research.
Alright, thank you. So our financial advisors, government financial strategist JP, they have shared with us over the last few months, both with the board and with district administration, the district's potential bonding capacity and a draft bond measure timeline, timeline. The district does have sufficient bonding capacity to support a possible twenty-six million dollar bond measure in November twenty-twenty-four. And there's some handouts for you in your packet that shows what we currently have out. We have Measure K, and we have Measure W. Measure W is almost paid off, that will be paid off in twenty-twenty-three, and then the district will just have Measure K left. And so that does help our bonding capacity. Uh, again, it's at twenty-six million dollars. We are at this point, the district is recommending that the board approve a partnership with its FM three, for short, the names there, with a research firm at this point, just to conduct a public survey. A community survey that would also be considered an opinion research regarding a possible November twenty-twenty-four bond measure. This is no obligation whatsoever to go out for a bond at this point. This is the beginning stages, just to see what the opinion of our community or potential voters might be for a bond. Um, we have here tonight with us Richard Bernard from FM three that can talk to us about the process. They are recommending a change with twenty-minute telephone online survey that would potentially, it could potentially um, be with the Galt High School District as well. Um, this is an action item for Galt High School District tomorrow night as well. And we have had conversations with our COE Superintendent Troy Miller that our COE might also be interested in collaborating with this as well. So, um, we have Richard here with us tonight, and I know there's some questions from the board just about the process of the survey, how the firm determines who they survey, the numbers, things like that. So I, I thank you, Richard, for being with us tonight.
My pleasure. Uh, would you like me to field the questions, or how would you like me to proceed?
How about, could you just give us a summary of the, the process?
Sure. Um, well, depending on which um, joint uh, school districts you partner with, the intent, um, I'm gonna present it as, I don't like to assume, so just for a hypothetical, if the high school district decides to join you folks tomorrow, if you choose to move forward tonight, I don't wanna get ahead of the uh, of the board. But let's make those assumptions, just so I can make the case. So our intent is to conduct a, a survey of five hundred, uh, a random survey of five hundred likely November twenty-twenty-four voters in the high school district. As you know, that uh, you are within the high school district, but there's a certain percentage that is within the high school district that your uh, district does not cover. And so we would cover with a sample of five hundred, we could uh, cover the whole high school district with a sample of four hundred and oversample your district with a hundred. So we would have a random sample of four hundred in the elementary school district and a, a random sample of four hundred in the high school district. Um, how do we get the data? Well, the registrar voters of your county uh, provides us with that data. Uh, we are able to look based on past voter history, if an individual is likely to vote in a November twenty-twenty-four election, which I believe that's the election that if you chose to move forward in the future, that would be one that you might consider. And we would randomly select the voters, and a portion of them would answer the survey on phone, and a portion would answer online. And because they're random, and because we're making sure that the demographics of your particular district mirror the demographics of the respondents, I can have statistically a high likelihood rate of being able to tell you of the likelihood of success at this time with a bond measure um, within a margin of error based on just sam- a sampling procedure. Um, and um, they, we plan to do a survey, as, as the superintendent said, of, of twenty minutes, uh, where we um, ask a bunch of questions that sort of get, get a sense of what they think about the district, what they know about the district. We will ask a, what I'll call a hypothetical placeholder uh, bond question uh, using the financial information from your financial experts. And then we will provide them with some educational statements and some critical statements to see how people react when they learn more about uh, your district, the needs that your district has, as well as concerns from folks in the community that may not be as familiar with the district as you folks clearly are. And that will allow us to simulate, in a, in effect, outreach by the district as well as any kind of opposition. And that puts us in a position to be able to tell you whether your measure is viable or not. Similarly, we would be testing in the high school area, the high school district measure. Um, and so we would also glean some information about having both measures on the ballot simultaneously. Um, and uh, I don't know if that, I, I, I don't wanna bore people to death with uh, ma- research methodology, but I'm happy to answer any question that you may have, um, and I'm happy to clarify anything that wasn't clear.
Do you have any questions?
I just had one with regards to sort of, in the old days, you know, people would have a landline, they would pick up the phone. I'm sure you probably get this question all the time.
All the time.
Now, you know, in the day of cell phones where people are worried about viruses, or worried about, you know, just don't even wanna be bothered.
Sure.
They don't even have a phone, um, area code that's in the district. Um, but they live here, and then conversely, the opposite, they might live in Florida but have a two oh nine, you know, area code.
Sure, sure.
For all of that in today's day and age.
So, that's a great question, uh, I do hear it a lot, but I, I think it's a thoughtful question, so thank you for it. Um, so the registrar recorder has all the folks who are, who are currently registered in your district. So if they've moved away and they're no longer registered, we're not including them at all, or I'm not worried about them. So let me give you a scenario to kind of set the explanation that you, you're requesting. Let's say, you, you live, I know your community quite well, I've done a bunch of surveys in your community, so you should know that. You have a lovely community, and I can envision that there are some folks who've been living there twenty, thirty, forty years. When they originally registered to vote, they registered to your point as with a landline. And they've never needed to re-register to vote because they haven't moved. So what we do is, and our voter vendor does, is they take the names and addresses of all your registered voters in your district, and they match it to up-to-date cellular as, in some cases, I have a landline, some people still do, landlines and emails that are available. Um, that updates and refreshes uh, the information for every, for all, all the folks. So let's say, I'd moved into your area three years ago from Tampa Bay, and I have a Tampa Bay area code. When I registered to vote, I either would have uh, put my phone number, my Tampa Bay phone number, my email, or both. So we will have your information, and we will also go and try to match that information with other data sources to update that information. And so we will contact folks, randomly contact folks by phone. Uh, cellphone, most of our calls, to be frank, are cell phones, probably not surprising. We have some landlines, uh, there's still some folks that are registered and have both. Um, certainly, my, my dad has both, and I do too as well. And we will also contact a random sample by email and by text. And certain demographics are more interested in responding um, through one version or the other. So for example, um, uh, we would have anticipated that younger folks would prefer to do emails or but what we're finding is folks who are as old as me, I, I'm sixty or older, actually are responding a lot on the emails. Um, and younger folks will do it through texts or phone. And so that allows us to get the right demographics that mirror the demographics of your district because we're constantly looking at age, gender, race, ethnicity, party registration to make sure that they're aligned with what we expect in November of twenty-twenty-four. I hope I answered that question.
Yes, that was very helpful.
Thanks. Yeah, please.
You didn't mention the fifteen to twenty minutes, if they, ten minutes and say, oh, I, I gotta go, or you know.
Yeah.
Is that counted as a non-completed survey, or how does that work?
Yeah, great question. Now, that, sometimes that happens online too, right? You start a, start a survey, and then all of a sudden, you get a family call, or you've gotta prepare dinner, or you have to help someone with homework, or whatever, and you say, oh, I really wanna do this, but I don't have time anymore. So we, on the online version, we know where you stopped. And we will send out, um, my vendor will send out a reminder to say, if you get a chance, we'd really like you to complete the survey. So we don't give up quite so easily. On the phone version, sometimes things happen, life, life happens, right? You're not expecting a call for a survey just out of nowhere. I, I don't know about you, but I often get calls for surveys, and I'm doing other things. Um, and so sometimes we will have them reschedule to complete the survey. Um, to answer your question directly, if they have not completed the entire survey, it is not considered to be a completed survey. When we come back, we will have completed surveys. I've done surveys for the city of Galt and for your, the consummate district. Um, you know, the, the fire and park district. And there, uh, we've had a very good response rate, um, we do not include surveys that are uncompleted.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure, and, and thanks for those questions, they were great.
I just have a question about the cost, so I see the estimated cost is thirty-one, five to forty-five. So I'm just wondering, I know it depends on the participation, would that be, so let's say it was our district plus the high school district, would that be the total we'd be splitting thirty-one to forty-five?
Yes, it, you're, we're looking, if we go with the twenty-minute survey, we're looking more at closer to forty-five thousand. And the breakdown, the thirty-one thousand is, I, I think, believe in the proposal, I think it's just the ten-minute survey, it's broken down for you, ten, fifteen, twenty minutes. We're leaning more towards the twenty-minute survey, and we are anticipating some travel cost. Um, we would like um, the firm to come and present in person to the board when we have the final data. So probably a little bit of travel cost as well. So we're looking at more of a total of forty-five thousand. And so depending on which districts participate in this, we would share that. So if, if our board decides tonight to go forward with this, and it's only us, then we are paying closer to the forty-five thousand, just us. If the high school district jumps on, then we would, you know, share the cost together, we would work out what that, what that cost would look, would look like. And if our COE jumps on, um, there might be a little increase to the forty-five thousand if they have to poll some voters that are not already accounted for in the two um, Galt districts. Because I think our COE stretches out a little bit further.
Yeah.
Um, so it could go up a little bit more, but if all three districts are participating, then the individual costs for districts are going to go down.
If, if, if I may, I, I, I wanna tell you, I've been doing this for more, more than twenty years. I've rarely seen such cooperation between various districts, it's super impressive. I, I just, I just like to throw that out, I, 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 I'm just in awe of that. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I, I did wanna share that.
We really try to, to work together, and we wanna, if our COE wants to go forward with this, they're obviously much smaller than us and can't afford to probably, or even warrant a, a large cost like this to do a survey, we would want to support their community as well. Um, and so that, that's why there's a range here, because there's still a couple other board meetings to happen to determine the final steps for this. Um, and again, in this proposal, you see some costs associated with a bond campaign. We're not asking the board for that right now, because we don't even know if we're going out for the bond. That would come to the board again, um, if we decide, if we decide to bring to the board to go for a, a, out for a bond, and then whether or not we want to um, contract with a, a campaigning firm or not. That would be decided at a later date.
So if, if the high school's interested as well, would we be doing separate bonds? One for just our district and one for just theirs?
Yes, we would.
On the same ballot, because that's my concern is.
It would be on the same ballot, it would, yes.
You could have the Yeah, they could say, no, it's a good time to do it, we think people will pass it, but it is that gonna be one of the questions, address it if there's multiple bonds? Do you know what I mean?
Yes, it's a great question. There's a big fear in a lot of jurisdictions that, well, if, if the, if the ballot is stacked, um, you know, how's that gonna impact us? This is a really interesting opportunity to directly see the impact of the various bonds on each other. Um, by law, the high school district will go first, I believe. And then, yeah, you know, by size, it will go down from there. And so you'll have a really great vantage point through research to see the impact of one on the other.
So is that one of the questions that you guys kind of ask?
Yeah, we, we, we will, we will ask, in the places, we're not, um, there's certain parts of the high school district, I'm sure you can appreciate where your, your district does not cover. There, we will not ask your ballot question, because it, no one will be confronted by that. But in your specific district, given, again, the assumption that, that you decide to move forward and that the high school district decides to move forward, and I never assume anything until it's done, but let's make that assumption. In your district, we will ask a high school question, a ballot question, and your question as well.
So it could come back that you have found that there is support for a high school bond, but not an elementary bond?
We can, well, all the permutations and combinations, right? They can be supportive of yours, but not theirs. We could, they can be supportive of both, they can be sort of theirs, but not yours, or they can be, uh, they could be not supportive of either. Um, and we would have that information for you.
Thank you.
Sure.
I guess my last question is just, is it something that we have to decide tonight? Or can we wait and see if the other districts are interested?
They're probably waiting to see what we do.
I, I think we're kind of at a crunch time, because we're getting really close. Either we make a decision to go forward with a survey or not, because November is, you know, there's some, you can see the timeline. The draft that's presented, it's pretty tight between now and getting this on a ballot, if that's what we were to choose to do, so.
Is it on the next high school agenda?
It's on for tomorrow night.
Yeah, and have they said how they feel?
You know, I, I don't wanna outs, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna.
I think that
They're waiting for us.
They don't have a swimming pool, for instance.
Yeah, they, they need a lot of facility work.
They need facility upgrades, I think that, I think we would be, at least be sharing the cost with the high school. I mean, but this is just my personal opinion, based on knowing some of the needs of the high school. It's really not a
I know they're seriously considering it, they've been talking about just like us. Um, I know our COE is seriously considering it too, but they do need a little support from the larger districts.
Yeah.
My, my personal opinion is that our last bond we went through, I think we've done an excellent job of following through, doing what we said we're doing. Uh, if you look, Valley Oaks is gonna look beautiful here when this building gets done, uh, all the upgrades we've done, and, and the last list, we, we, we still got a lot more that we need to get done. It would be great to, for me, it would be great to see that more buildings, more schools get upgraded.
I think that the opinion survey, you know, you know, doesn't hurt to get the information. And so, you know, again, they will, they'll tell us, give us direction on what we should do, and, and we might find that now's the time, and we might find that now's not the time. But I, if I had to say, if I had to make a guess, I would think that the high school will go through, if, if they hear that we are willing to partner and share this initial cost. I, I
I just don't wanna be stuck with the cost for this.
I understand, just, yeah, but it is a risk you're taking
Yeah, I know, for sure.
Of approving this on our own, and nobody else comes, and then we're, we're with the whole bill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But the high school needs, there's, there's some facilities that need some major upgrading, so. But the high school needs, there's, there's some facilities that need some major upgrading, so. Following, well, I think that they're waiting for us. If we say yes, I think they're gonna be yes.
That's what I, I would, I would guess. But again, like Richard said, we don't want to, we don't want to make some assumptions before it's done, but.
It's a calculated.
Yeah, maybe, uh, restrooms and everything else over there.
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts are following through and. So, yeah, the, everybody actually needs.
Yeah.
If, if, if it helps, some of the survey will allow us to identify what your voter priorities are. On your faci- facility needs. We will isolate and test a variety of facilities. That your, um, your school district needs, your individual classrooms, labs, and the like. And they'll be able, you'll be able to see a priority among the community as to what they would like to see. So even if. Um, at the end of the day, the data suggests this is not your time, and we'll be honest with you. Uh, I don't want you to incur a, a greater cost if, uh, it's a very stark risk. You know, if it's a very great risk, I, I'll tell you that. Um, uh, but if there's an opportunity, we'll be able to, from the survey, be able to cobble together. A bond question that when people read it, they say, this is, this is important to our community, this is important to the kids in our community. Um, all of that will be provided in the context of a survey. Um, so you will learn a lot about your community that you don't generally get to, to learn or glean, because. Um, I can't see the attendance there. It looks like it's a, a well-attended group. But, um, I'm assuming you don't get thousands a night who attend, um, your district. But you'll have an opportunity to reach out to a lot of folks who are busy or not connected to the elementary school, but. It's such a vital place in your, their community, and they'll have an opinion, and, um, that may help you in, in how you, um, govern. Um, moving forward with or without a bond. So. That, that's sometimes helpful for a board to know that there's data there that's not only isolated to a bond.
That's a good point. And from a process perspective, when do we see the survey and the, like, the materials that are going out on the survey? Is that as the survey has been done, or do we get a chance to see that beforehand?
Sure, well, we'll work with, um, superintendent staff and, again, assuming, but not, uh, for certain. The high school district, if, if they, um, move along as, uh, either in isolation or with you folks. Um, we will work with them to, uh, better understand the facility needs in your community, and. Um, I'm going to soon, please let me know if I'm wrong, that the superintendent has your ear. And you have their, and you have her ear, and so she is familiar with your priorities, and that will help us in drafting. Um, the, the survey. Um, it's our general preference not to provide the survey in public. Form, because it will bias the survey. Let's say I come to your board and it's a Brown Act board, yes, Brown Act board. I present all the questions to you, that's publicly requestable. If the survey gets out into the public before we get a chance to administer. It could taint the results of the survey. And we're trying to be as scientific and as systematic as possible by understanding your needs. And then communicating those needs in the survey and seeing how a random sample of your likely voters respond without. Knowing the questions ahead of time. Um, so, um, how the superintendent would like to communicate it, I will leave it up to her. Uh, there are a variety of ways to do that, but, um, we recommend, um, that we don't present the survey in public. Not because we're fearful of transparency, but, uh, I'm fearful of biasness. Um, let's say, for example, uh, I, you know, I, I don't know your, all your needs, but let's say. You needed a merry-go-round, right? Just a hypothetical thing. And all the parents that really wanted the merry-go-round. Knew that was one of the questions, and they called everyone they knew in the city and says. When you get to that question on merry-go-round, whether you want one or not, say you want it. And then all of a sudden, the number for the merry-go-round goes really, really high. Um, and in reality, some people don't want that merry-go-round, but they're being nice to their friends. So we're trying to eliminate that biasness. It's a silly example, but I hope you, you get my point.
Merry-go-rounds are really fun.
Absolutely.
Very helpful.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
Anybody else have any more questions? See, and I'll make the motion to approve or consideration of the FM three research.
I'll second.
Lynette?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a motion from Wesley Cable, here's your body number two, three, two, four, one, six, seconded by Annette Kinsey, Tracy Skinner.
Hi.
Casey Reboy.
Hi.
Catherine Harper.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Richard.
Thank you for your time. I look forward to seeing you in person.
Yes, thank you.
Take care.
Moving on to two, three, two point four, one, seven, for consideration approval, resolution number three, authorized signatures. For the Galt Elementary District.
Yes, thank you. Um, so effective after this board meeting, um, with board approval, it is recommended that the following authorize signatures for the financial and contractual obligations of the district. Um, this is happening because I just got hired, but it is just adding me, and, and Lois, Lois is already on there, and Brenna's on there.
Pretty straightforward, thank you very much. All right, uh, can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve two, three, two point four, one, seven.
Thank you, Lynette. And a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you. The motion from Annette Kinsey, here's your body number two, three, two, four, one, seven, seconded by Tracy Skinner, Wesley Cable.
Aye.
Casey Reboy.
Hi.
Catherine Harper.
Hi.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to two, three, two point four, one, eight, for consideration approval of the side letter agreement between the elementary district. And the Galt Elementary Faculty Association, the G E F A, regarding acceleration blocks for the two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
All right, thank you. So we have a side letter with our teachers union, G E F A. This is very similar to the side letter we had in place last year. For acceleration blocks, this is where a teacher would teach after school with a targeted group of students, six to eight students. And they would be able to choose two days a week, um, for a four-week session, and they'd choose that block with their administrator's approval. Um, we have some, in the side letter, we have some timeframes, we have, um, a roster, we have some feedback that teachers would give their administrators about the. The outcome of the acceleration blocks. We also have a rate of eighty dollars an hour. For this, this is higher than our adjunct duty rate, but we are able to offer the eighty dollars an hour unique. Using learning loss funds, these are one-time funds we've received from the state just for this purpose, for learning loss, and so. That's why this side letter is a one-year agreement too, because we anticipate we won't always be able to afford the higher rates. The current contracted rate for adjunct duty rate, um, pays fifty-five dollars an hour. And so, um, we can, at least for one more year, with learning loss funds, um, afford the higher rate. So we are asking for board approval for this.
Any questions?
I had a couple of questions. Um, so, as I was going through this, and I know this was something that had happened, I think, previously as well, in a prior year or so. Um, but I'm just coming on board, so I'm learning about this. Um, I wanted to kind of know what the parental. I didn't see anything regarding parental involvement, so I was wondering if someone could explain a little bit how parents are included. Um, and then also attendance, I know attendance is a big topic this year, so how do we ensure that these are being attended and the slots are being used effectively? And if someone doesn't attend, is there, you know, sort of a, uh, option to replace that? You know, put another student in there as well. And then just a general comment, that I appreciate the, it being very clear that it's, you know, a limited time. Um, just so we don't create a new normal inadvertently with regards to the eighty dollars versus the fifty-five, so we certainly appreciate that. So thank you for that.
Yes. So I can go ahead and, um, I can answer the parent piece, so there's definitely parent communication and parent permission that we have to get for this, and. Typically, a lot of times what happens is teachers will communicate with, um, parents initially at parent conference week. Um, which is coming up early this year, right around the time these blocks might start. And they would let parents know that there is a need or there is a concern, and some areas that they would. Um, like to provide extra services, whether those services are during the school day, uh, which we have a lot of extra services during the school day. Or if there might be an opportunity to attend school after school. And so that's how it is first approached, and there is definitely parent permission, signature. Working all of that out, how the student's getting home, um, and, and that.
Thank you.
And then for the attendance piece, definitely, so our goal in the side letter is for a small group of six to eight students. And so there is a roster that we ask teachers to, to take attendance. And, um, principals should be approving this, and if there, if it drops down, and, you know, there's not students attending, if. We're down to two, three, four students that are attending, we would expect that a teacher would initiate, invite other students. Um, and with this language here, um, they, they can invite students from their grade level, or even from other grade levels, sure, you know, if they desire to do so. Doesn't have to just be their classroom. So maybe, um, I'm a third grade teacher, I'm the only teacher that's teaching, um, acceleration blocks. I'm down to four students, or I only have four students in my own class, I can ask my team members if they're, if they have any students they want to recommend. To make a group of six to eight. And so we would ask that teachers would continue to monitor, monitor this, so we keep that class size at, at the six to eight.
And then at the end of the program, is there like, would they come back and report to the board? Is like this, you know. How the program went and things like that, or is that something I could work with Wes as an agenda item?
We could. So what we could do is, we can run reports, we can, for example, um. Principals are collecting these, and so they do know who's attending, and so, for example, say, at the end of a MAP testing window. Or at the end of the school year, we want to look at students that attended at least two block sessions. Maybe they attended for eight weeks. We want to look at their MAP scores. So we can run those reports. We can say, these fifty students had sixteen sessions or more of acceleration blocks. And this was their MAP scores before acceleration blocks, these are their MAP scores after. So we could definitely prepare those kinds of reports for the board.
And this, when's the official start?
They can start as of the week of October second.
So how about, can we do a, can we get a report in November? Of like, how many students have signed up?
Sure, how many teachers have signed up? Yeah. And, and do you know, teachers don't have to start October second? They can say, um, you know, I don't want to start until after Thanksgiving, or I don't want to start until January. Um, that's a time that a lot of teachers kind of tend to start, beginning of the year is, is busy, and then you have, you know, given the holidays. But we could definitely, you know, maybe every other month or so, give you a report on how many teachers we have teaching acceleration blocks and how many students are attending. Yes, we can do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? See, and now, can I get a motion for the, uh, two, two, three, two point four, one, eight?
I'll make the motion to approve item two, three, two point four, one, eight.
Tracy? I'll second it.
Thank you. I have a motion from Tracy Skinner, here's your body number two, three, two, four, one, eight, seconded by Wesley Cable, Casey Reboy.
Aye.
Annette Kinsey.
Aye.
Catherine Harper.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
For that. Moving on, two, three, two point four, one, nine, for consideration of approval of the elementary district's, uh, actuarial study of retiree health. Liabilities under G S B seventy-four, seventy-five for the fiscal year ending June thirty of two thousand twenty-three.
Um, yes, for the, the district's most recent actuarial study was conducted in September twenty twenty-two. Um, under the government of county standards, we refer to G A S B, G A S B seventy-four, seventy-five actuarial studies, full evaluations conducted. The two years, therefore, what's coming up right now in the presentation by total compensation, they're, they're going to present the results of the study. And, um, it's based off to determine our liabilities associated with our current retiree health program. So we should be coming up soon.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
All right, or good evening, sorry. So, well, um. So as was mentioned, I'm here to present the results of the G A S B seventy-five, um, report. And the purpose of this report is, is really twofold. Um, one is to estimate the cost for providing retiree health benefits, uh, to your employees. And the other one is to meet the requirements, um, for putting this liability on your financial statements. Um, and so, some of the things we'll, I'll go over today is, you know, what you're currently offering your employees, um, in terms of retiree health benefits. Um, you know, how we provide, how we actually come up with the valuation or the results. Um, provide the results, and then, you know, what, what's going to happen next year. Um, so what are the current benefits that you're offering your employees at retirement? Um, so you provide medical, dental, and vision. Um, benefits are paid for five years or until they reach age sixty-five, whichever comes first. Um, the district pays about a hundred percent of the premium up to a cap. Uh, dependents are covered. Um, and in order to get the benefit, um, certificated and management employees must retire on or after age fifty-five with twenty years of service. And classified employees must retire on or after age sixty with twenty years of service. Um, then, the, this valuation for this year is called a roll forward, so we take, we took the numbers from twenty twenty-two and rolled them forward one year. And so the counts that you see there are as of six thirty twenty twenty-two. Um, and so as of that date, there were three hundred and fifty-seven employees and, and thirty-three retirees that were included in the valuation. Um, and so, you know, I kind of just mentioned that really the purpose is to estimate the cost, and, and so the way we. Come up with that is we use a lot of assumptions to estimate when your employees are going to retire. Um, when they retire, what the benefit's going to be, so what are the medical costs going to be? And it's really just an estimate. Um, and so the way we accomplish that is every year, we, we estimate the number of retirees. Um, and, and what you're going to be paying for those retirees. And so what you see down here on this table is the next ten years. What we do is we, based on those three hundred and fifty-seven employees and those thirty-three retirees. Um, we actually estimate all future years of costs, um, but we're only showing you the first ten years here. So for this year, twenty-three, twenty-four, it's about a hundred and seventy-six thousand, and you can see that by twenty thirty-one, thirty-two, it's about five hundred and eighteen thousand. And so that assumes that there are, you're going to have new employees retiring, and those that are, you know, hitting age sixty-five before that are going to be dropping off. Uh, and so then we take all those future benefit payments that we calculate, and we bring them to today's dollars. Um, and so that's called the present value. And so the present value of all those benefits is eight point six million. Um, but then we prorate those eight point six million based on service that they've earned through the valuation. Or through six thirty, uh, twenty twenty-three in this case. And so. The green part of that chart, that pie chart, is what's been earned by your employees already. Um, so of those eight point six million, they've earned in service, five point six. That little green slip, um, sorry, that red sliver there is what they're expected to earn over the coming year, so that's, uh, the service cost. So it's about three hundred thousand, and then the yellow portion is what they're expected to earn in future years. Um, and so as your employees earn more service, the, the green part of the pie is going to get bigger and bigger. And it's going to converge to that eight point six. Uh, keep in mind that that eight point six million is a moving target. It means every year, as you get more employees or retirees, you know, retire, um, drop off because they're hit sixty-five, um, that number's going to be changing. And so, again, the, the, really the important matter, the number that matters is that, that green part of the sliver, so that, what's called the total O P E V liability. Um, and that's what's been earned through the valuation date. And so as of twenty twenty-two, that was five point three million. And you can see that the service cost was about three hundred thousand, um, so that increased the liability about five point six. So every year you can expect your liability, um, assuming there's no other changes, that to increase about three hundred thousand. Um, and volatility should be expected. Next year, we're going to do another full valuation, and you're going to have differences in census and differences between what we expected and what actually happened. Um, you know, the interest rate, in order to come up with the present value, is tied to twenty-year high-grade municipal bond rates, and that, those have been changing, so. You know, as the interest rate goes up, your liabilities come down. Um, and so if, if bonds continue to increase, your liabilities go down. If, if bonds increase, or I'm sorry. If, if bonds increase, or I'm sorry, if the bond rate decreases, then your liability goes up. So over the coming year, again, we expect their liability to go up about another three hundred thousand. Um, and so, you know, I kind of mentioned some of those things already, but again, another full valuation next year. That's where we collect census and premium rate information. Your expected pay-as-you-go cost, so you, what you expect to pay your retirees over the coming year is about a hundred and seventy-six thousand. And that liability we expect to go up three hundred thousand, but you know, that's going to be different based on when we run the new valuation. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, that's on the PowerPoint, the report, the report is uh, different. The, the, the most important page on our report, if you have that available, is page, the bottom of page two. Um, and so this is every year, if you really, if you would like to look at this report, it's that section, the bottom of page two shows you how the liability changed from one year to the next. And so that's probably the most important section of our report. So you can see that the five point three million is there and then twenty-twenty-three, it's there, you know, the five point six and you can see that. Again, the service cost, there's interest, the, the five point three is a debt, so it grows with interest. And then you make benefit payments throughout the year, so we expected your liability to go up about three hundred thousand. There was a little bit of the discount rate change from uh, three point five-four to three point six-five. So it went up a little bit, so it reduces the liability a little bit, but still pretty in line with what we expected.
Can I get to the PowerPoint, Emily?
Yeah, this chart on the top of the page here is nice to see what the payments are expected to go up. This year. We went up almost, well, not quite, what, eight thousand or so from twenty-two to twenty-three and continue to go up.
Any, any questions?
I just wanted clarity on, it's an action item, so what are we actually voting on to make an adjustment in the financial statements or?
It's presenting the actual study to the board. It's something that we're required to do to present it to the board on annual basis. So you'll get another one next year and it's going to be the full evaluation. Um, right now it's, um, we, we present it to the auditors that we've conducted the study with, um, total compensation.
Okay, so we're just voting on accepting this study that was completed, okay, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve two-three-two point four-one-nine?
I'll make the motion to approve two-three-two point four-one-nine.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, the motion from Tracy Skinner to approve item number two-three-two four-one-nine, seconded by Casey Rabeloy. Wesley Cable?
Aye.
Annette Coonsy?
Aye.
Kathryn Harper?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Yes, it has the eighty breakdown, yeah, it is a good report, it's, it's helpful. And it is annually.
We're going to go on to two-three-two point four-two-zero, board consideration approval of the twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuals.
Yes, thank you, um, it is that time of year for the presentation. Um, this is the time when we present our audited actuals, it's presenting actual expenditures of our last fiscal year, the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. So the normal process of this is normally done in September. Um, previously, um, they presented, um, in June, the adopted budget for the new fiscal year and then the revised, um, Lois presented last month. So what I'm presenting is what happened at the end of last year as of June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Other ones, the first interim I'll be presenting in December, second interim will be in March and then the process starts all over again. So a summary of our unaudited actual, our, the COLA was six point five-six for the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year. Our source increase of two point one-eight percent and our first at two point four-six percent. L C F F revenue increase in all three years, although in declining enrollment as of twenty-two, twenty-three. I know we've seen some increases in this current fiscal year. We did get an increase in the COLA, allowing our ADA to be funded in that three-year average. So what, what the governor had presented to, to, due to that decline during COVID is, um, they, they gave us, it used to be best of two years, but now, uh, of two years, now it's giving us a three-year average, helping us to get more funding for the district. We did receive that one hundred thousand dollar James B. Um, um, Makashi grant for that dual language, like, oh, that was the immersion program at first. Um, we, we received a special education one-time funding, about two hundred thousand. So the final enrollment as of twenty-two, 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 twenty-three fiscal year is at three thousand three hundred and thirteen. We are seeing an increase, so that's a really positive thing for the district. Our unduplicated people percentage is what we refer to the U P P, decreased to sixteen point nine eight in that last fiscal year. So hopefully you can see that increase in that, in our new fiscal year. Um, so I want to take some time to review our unrestricted and restricted funds. Our unrestricted revenue, which what we refer to our general fund revenue, are funds that are not subject to specific constraints and that are used for any purpose, not prohibited by ed code though. Uh, restricted revenues are those funds receiving the specific, for a specific purpose, like grants that we receive and they tell us what you, what you can and can't spend the funds in. They are restricted to that purpose, some examples are restricted lottery, title one, special education. All of those have purposes and we get audited and they actually review our expenditures. So we have to be careful in what we are allowed to do with our restricted funds. Um, the fund, that, fund balance are referred as to the reserves, um, are the unspent funds at the end of the fiscal year and will fall into unrestricted, restricted, non-spendable, committed, assigned or unassigned. So we have different categories in our financial report that what doesn't get spent, it falls in the bottom portion and then I'll be explaining that in the following slides, what that looks like. How are we funded? So we're funded in this L C F F, um, funding calculator that the state provides. It's different components of funding and we refer to as the L C F F revenue. We have our base grant. Um, we have a portion of great spending adjustment and our supplemental concentration is due to that unduplicated people percentage amount. And when we meet, if we meet over fifty-five percent, that supplemental and comes in and then after a certain percentage, then that concentration kicks in. So it helps us receive that funding and it's a focus on our U P P students and then that's tied into our L cap. So here's a summary of our unrestricted and restricted expenditures. Um, the district's revenues, I mean, yeah, the district's revenues are about sixty-two million dollars. This includes the one-time funding, like our learning laws. Um, so the S R funds that are remaining for the fiscal year. Um, and then our unrestricted portion of it. So it, we, we are funded about sixty million dollars of that in the last fiscal year, so. And then the next one will be our, our expenditures. So on our expenditures side, salary, salaries and benefits are about forty-four million dollars. Um, that's about eighty-two percent of our district's budgets as a whole and includes one-time funds. We do have a lot of that, um, um, learning laws remaining, um, includes that actual ELOP is ongoing, but it's restricted and it's, it's reflected on there. Um, the S R funds and some of the discretionary block grants that we have received. So cost of living are what we refer to COLA. For fiscal year, uh, our last fiscal year, as I mentioned, is at six point five-six. For the new fiscal year, we're, we're anticipating that eight point two-two percent in COLA. And then, um, the following subsequent year is at three point nine-four. It is important to note that the COLA is, are, is designed simply to account for an increase or inflated, uh, inflated costs and then does not provide an increase on the spending capacity. So our unrestricted reserve levels, uh, for the end of twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year is twenty-two point eight-one. Keep in mind, this includes any expenditures we were, we weren't able to complete in the last fiscal year and that they're committed for certain projects that the board has approved. So curriculum, for example, some of the projects that have, weren't able, we weren't able to meet in twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year, but we are planning to do it in the following fiscal years. So it's, it's a combination of committed, um, it's a combination of unrestricted assigned items. We have lottery that it's supposed to be spent for instructional purposes and we will be spending it in this fiscal year. And so that looks a little higher than normal, but because it's still committed to cer- certain expenditures. Um, here's a summary of our district enrollment and ADA, how we're funded. As of nine fourteen, um, Lois, um, mentioned that there, we increased our enrollment at three thousand three hundred and ninety-three, but what we closed our financials with and what we reported to our auditors and county, you can see for twenty-two, twenty-three, it was at three thousand three one-three. And our ADA, because it's an average of three years, is that three thousand three hundred and thirty-three. Uh, we're anticipating our ADA increase with that enrollment, but we'll work with ed services on, on, on some strategies so we can continue to improve our ADA, which will mean more funding for the district. So it's something that we'll be working on in the next following fiscal years. So the findings and notices of our unaudited actuals, got joint uni, uh, joint union elementary schools to cast metal is financial obligations with the support of one-time federal funds, state funds and that increase in COLA. The district continues to monitor and enrollment in ADA. We'll be working closely with educational services department on tools to help increase our attendance. And ensuring safe to secure learning environments continue to be priority at our schools. This involves investment in our MAP curriculum adoption, security measures, facility maintenance and upgrades to ensure that students and staff can learn and work in a safe, supportive environment. I think you have any questions for me, if I spoke so fast, I'm sorry.
Good job, good report.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one on the enrollment, you had, I was trying to reconcile, so you said thirty-three thirteen and then in the earlier report, and I'm sure it's just something I'm missing. Um, and then the earlier report and the reports piece was thirty-three sixty-one. So I was just wondering what that difference is, is it just timing and?
Thirteen and the thirty-three thirteen on here, which one are you?
So in the very beginning, when they did the, um, reports at the beginning of the meeting, on the enrollment update, the ending twenty-two, twenty-three was thirty-three sixty-one.
So when we, when we get funded, um, we report to the state. It's, it's a certification of our, and, um, enrollment on CALFAS and, and and usually it's based on that P-two revised amount, which you reported as of end of June thirtieth and that is correct. But when we get funded, they use an amount, sometimes in P-one period at the beginning of the fiscal year, our enrollment can be higher. Then on P-two, uh, during the P-two period in April, it may go down, which then that, they, they have to decide what period are they going to fund us. They don't go based on as of June thirtieth, they have to do a cut-off day where, when the districts are going to be funded. So that's why, um, it will be shown a little bit off, but it's because of that P-two revised period that we provided in June on that update to the state.
Okay, great, thank you, I knew there was a reason.
Just you're using like a certain, about time of year, they do the cut-off date?
Yes. So the P-one period is, um, we certify at the end of October, but we are able to do updates at the end of December. And then the final period, which is the funded period, our P-two, is usually around, um, April, but we're able to do corrections in June and that's the portion we use in our L C F F calculator to be funded.
Any other questions? Can I get a motion to approve the twenty-two, twenty-three unaudited actuals?
I'll make the motion.
Is that Annette?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thanks, Casey.
Thank you, the motion from Annette Coonsy to approve item number two-three-two four-two-zero, seconded by Casey Rabeloy. Wesley Cable?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Kathryn Harper?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to two-three-two point four-two-one, board consideration approval of resolution number four, the resolution of governing board to commit fund balance for twenty-three, twenty-four.
So this is an update that was presented from June, um, thirtieth in the board meeting. Um, so what happens when we close our financials, then we realize what we weren't able to come, complete in the last fiscal year. So this is committing the funds we originally have committed in the last fiscal year to the actual balances to reflect what, what its purpose is for. So as a result of the balance, uh, in the state public system civilization account of the statutory limitations, school districts are required to, um, bring a resolution to the board. Um, anytime the district's cap, it goes over that ten percent, we do have committed funds that we previously presented. This is just an update as we are closing our financials.
Any questions? Okay, see none, um, I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the, the fund balance for twenty-three, twenty-four. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Tracy.
Thank you, the motion from Wesley Cable to approve item number two-three-two four-two-one, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Casey Rabeloy?
Aye.
Annette Coonsy?
Aye.
Kathryn Harper?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Moving on to two-three-two point four-two-two, board consideration approval, resolution number five, the G A M limit. This is a yearly.
This is an annual routine item that we bring, especially once we do our unaudited actuals to find out what's our financials. The G A M limit is intended to constrain state local government spending growth by linking the year-to-year changes and expenditures to inflation and population via tax resolution and support your documentation, so routine item. I'm showing what the appropriations is for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year and how we ended up at twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Anybody have any questions on G A M limit? See none, can I get a motion to approve the resolution number five?
I'll make the motion.
Thanks, Kathryn.
I'll second.
Thank you, the motion from Kathryn Harper to approve item number two-three-two four-two-two, seconded by Casey Rabeloy. Wesley Cable?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Annette Coonsy?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Moving on. Two-three-two point four-two-three, board consideration approval of substitute teacher pay rate increase.
Nevertheless, to attract and retain highly qualified substitute teachers for fault union, um, we have researched teacher substitute rates in our surrounding districts and based on the research, the falling daily rates have been adjustments for your review. It's just to be competitive and qualified and I know we're going to be having a lot of absences, we have people leaving on retiree leave, so. My recommendation is, is presented.
Yeah, I, uh, I'd like more of a comment. I know that surrounding, uh, communities, districts are raising theirs, we gotta, we gotta keep competing with them. What's, it's, it's quick, this is that we've got to like, be able to draw those subs. Otherwise, we weren't, has administrators always in the classroom instead of being where they need to be. Anybody have any questions or comments? See none, can I get a motion to approve the substitute teacher pay rate?
I'll make the motion to approve the teacher pay raise. Item two-three-two point four-two-three.
Thanks, Casey.
I'll second.
Thank you, the motion from Casey Rabeloy to approve item number two-three-two four-two-three, seconded by Tracy Skinner. Wesley Cable?
Aye.
Annette Coonsy?
Aye.
Kathryn Harper?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
Moving on, two-three-two point four-two-four, uh, the first reading and board consideration of approval of board policy three-three-one four-point-two revolving funds.
Yeah, so, um, the board policy three-three-one four-point-two revolve funds is updated to allow the district to authorize um, a revolving fund to set for electronic payments. A revolving account for electronic payment shall be used for donations and fundraisers. Uh, customary C S B recommends the school district place board policies and administrative regulations on the board agenda as information, I know with the opportunity to public comment and then an action item for the, for what the subsequent board meeting. However, um, being able to do the first reading and adoption will allow the di- the district to immediately accept donations and fundraisers via electronic payment.
And this ties into the next kind of item, which is like, so you can set up a, a Venmo or like something?
Yes, or i- if it was any type of company to set up electronic payments to receive payment, um, that's the reason I just left electronic payments in case there's other vendors that we do have and, and, and we could, we could just go with someone that either costs less. Um, but I, I can explain what the Venmo looks like and how that will work in the next one.
Anybody have any, any question? Straightforward, um, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve two-three-two point four-two-four.
All right, thank you, Annette, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, the motion from Annette Coonsy to approve item number two-three-two four-two-four, seconded by Casey Rabeloy. Wesley Cable?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Kathryn Harper?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion carries unanimously.
And we'll move to, uh, two-three-two point four-two-five, board consideration approval to open Venmo accounts for elementary district.
Correct, so, um, the board policy that I had to bring in first, it was, um, recommended- Correct. So the board policy that I had to bring in first, it was a recommendation from our auditors. In order to start the process, we have to have a board policy in place. And then the next, the next process from our auditors is request a pool to open the Venmo account that'll be used for donations and fundraisers. This Venmo account will be monitored. We reconcile monthly. We'll be following the internal controls process that we already follow with our bank accounts. And then we'll have someone outside from the site reconciling the account. That way it gets used properly. And, and we're following our Big Mac guidance and our auditors' guidance of how this account will be set up and those procedures will be provided to the principals and then I'll make them available online too, just to make, to maintain transparency.
I, I know one of the big things about the Venmo, a lot of companies and like organizations are getting away from it because of the, the tax implications with that.
So when we set up the account, I'm setting up as a nonprofit. So we submit our documentation, so we won't get affected on the tax portions and we won't be paying taxes on it. There is a fee to receive. It, it's like using our ATMs, our Visa and stuff. They usually trust, charge a processing fee. And those details will, I'll have those once I actually get to open the account and details of what that looks like. It's just another option to give parents and vendors the opportunity to donate directly. And it's, it's, it's going to help school sites and I have them funding and once we reconcile, we'll let them know how much they have available, but we don't have to worry about the tax portion. I do, I do monitor the fees. That's the reason why I left it electronic payments because I do know of, I want to see if there, if it's going to cost, the percentage is going to be high. I want to see what other vendors charge to. But it's going to, I'm trying to make it as easy as possible where they could just scan the QR code and they just pay us directly.
Thank you. I get a motion to approve, please.
I'll make the motion to approve item two-three-two point four-two-five.
All right. I'll second it.
Do you have a motion from Casey Rabboy to approve item number two-three-two four-two-five, seconded by Wesley Cable? Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Annette Cooney?
Aye.
Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
And then moving on to two-three-two point four-two-six, for consideration of approval of the following board policies.
All right. So last month, we brought these policies to the board for the first reading. We reviewed the changes and each cabinet member viewed summary for their department. And there were no recommendations from the board to make any changes. And so they're brought to you again, the same, same language and changes as the first reading. And so now we're recommending approval to make these changes to the policies and ARs.
Okay. Anybody have any, any questions? Any of the changes? Seeing none? Can I get a motion to approve?
I can make the motion to approve two-three-two point four-two-six.
All right. Thanks, Annette. Can I get a second?
I can second.
All right. Thanks, Casey.
Do you have a motion from Annette Cooney to approve item number two-three-two four-two-six, seconded by Casey Rabboy? Wesley Cable?
Aye.
Tracy Skinner?
Aye.
Catherine Harper?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries unanimously.
Are there any public comments?
There are no public comments.
No public comments. Pending agenda items? Acceleration blocks update. Any other items anybody would like to see on a future agenda? Seeing none? I'll say to do is adjourn. Thank you, everybody. There is, you gotta sign this.